Alright, well, good evening. Welcome to the town of Walpole's Bike Board Meeting of July 14. Uh, the time being 7:01. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic. For which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Excellent. Alright, and uh, we'll start off with three quick points of order. Um, all members will be participating remotely under the government's authorized remote participation for public boards, under the emergency declaration order from March 12, and every vote taken will be by roll call. Uh, second, I'd like to take a minute to thank Jim O'Neil, uh, for his guidance and leadership of this board over the last year. Uh, through some very challenging times for this town, so, uh, thank you, Jim. It's very much appreciated.
Thanks, Ben. Appreciate it.
And, uh, lastly, before we get into the good stuff, I'd like to welcome Eva Kelly as the new executive assistant, uh, to the town administrator and to our board. So, welcome, Eva. It's great to have you on board.
Thanks, Ben. I look forward to working with you all.
Yeah, great. Okay, so we'll dive right in. I see Ashley. Hello, Ashley. Join us. Um, Ashley, why don't you go ahead and take it away unless, uh, Jim Johnson, did you wanna say anything about the shared spaces grant? Before Ashley gives the update?
It's all Ashley.
Okay.
Fantastic.
So, I'm gonna screen share. I know, um, okay. Everyone, there's a, let's see. Full screen. Can everyone see this alright?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so, I'm gonna go through these quickly, cuz I know you have a long agenda, so all, I'm happy to go back and answer any questions that you might have. Um, so basically, the goal of this is to make targeted and impactful changes in the downtown area to improve the pedestrian realm and activate Main Street a bit. Um, the grant is an awards amount of $5,000 to $300,000, and the idea is to, um, have, have things that can be quickly implemented, um, or things like expanding sidewalks, curbs, streets, and so on. And the idea is that with more people needing more room to kind of navigate the social distancing requirements, where people are spending time outside, um, how, how can we kind of create more spaces for people to get out more and also be safe? Um, the grant closes September 29th, and we're working with a technical consultant to help us kind of fine tune our application. Um, so that people don't think I'm just pulling these things out of nothing. Um, this is where having those studies done, like the downtown action plan and the parking study, are super helpful tools for when these grants come up. So, I was able to kind of go to the, to these documents and use these documents, um, to help inform kind of the ideas that, that, uh, I'm gonna present to you. So, basically, I mean, you're all familiar with these studies, but, um, let's make Main Street in the downtown area more tractable, more pedestrian friendly, and have more kind of community gathering spaces. Um, so this is from the Parking and Economic Development Strategy. Again, activate public spaces, make downtown more walkable, improve intersections, add crosswalks. Um, you get the idea here. So, um, I've broken it down into three areas. Um, the first is Springbrook Park, uh, the second is the Main Street elements, and then, uh, I'm calling it the Elm Connection idea. Um, so really quickly, we're discussing adding a crosswalk over. So, it's shown up. Can you see the little hand? On the screen? Where am I? No? Okay.
No, it looks like, um, it looks like you're still on the first slide. I don't know if that's your intent.
Do you, so do you see Springbrook Park at the top?
No, it's just the first page, Ashley.
It's the first page, actually.
Oh, thanks for telling. Okay, now-
There we go.
Oh, okay, well, forget it. There were other slides. Um, so, can you, so, I'm sorry. So, this green is here. We, I went out with, um, our town engineers today and think that a, a more free location for a crosswalk is actually over here. Um, there's, so you don't wanna have someone cross over into someone's house or a driveway, um, but folks kind of walk along this path here and then cross here. There's also an existing bus stop here, so it kind of makes sense to have a connection. Um, traffic speeds through here really closely, so we're definitely looking at, um, you know, flashers and it wouldn't, it won't just be paint on the ground, there'll be something in place to alert cars that, hey, there, there might be people up ahead. Um, so, just to highlight, people from Town Hall will literally drive over to Farmer and the Dell, and it's about 1,000 feet or so if you were to walk. Um, and here again, highlighting the lack of, uh, crosswalk. This is what it looks like visually. Um, I wanted to add tables as part of this grant, but in speaking with the technical, uh, consultants, the grant, you can't actually use money to put furniture in parks. So, maybe this is, we find a different way to fund seating in this area, because I think it would be, um, a really nice amenity for that park there, and especially with the farmer's market being there. Um, so the, the Main Street elements are kind of, I think it would be fun if we had funds to do some fun, like painted crosswalks, kind of bookending the Main Street. Some, so the idea would be think, like, not changing any materials, not doing anything super expensive, but like throwing some paint on the ground, um, to just kind of add some aesthetic, you know, fun to Main Street, and, um, just draw attention, like this is a place for people. Um, another thing we're looking at for the grant are adding some parklets. So, right now, um, there's some seating out front of Ravens Nest and Tessie's. The idea could be we could build a structure that, that could be broken down, taken apart, and put away at the wintertime, but something that can be placed in these spaces that are built with some sort of structure or frame to protect from cars, um, cuz that's definitely a concern there. There's also talk about, you know, different traffic calming measures in general around Main Street, and we're, um, looking for recommendations from our technical reviewers on the best, fastest way to do that. Um, so here's just some visual ideas of what a parklet actually looks like. Um, there's lots of fun ways that you can make them unique to the individual space. I like the, the, um, the chalkboard, because you could literally write your own, like if a restaurant were using this, they could put their, their menu there. Right now, everyone has to use one menu and then throw it away. So, this could be, you know, a fun way to, you know, have it out there. Um, this was an idea, this idea is probably the least favorite of people who I've spoken with, and probably the least, um, like one that, that realistically isn't gonna be easy to implement, just given the size of the space here, but certainly having a conversation about, look, we have this like really wide Main Street. Is there, is there a way to, um, make it more pedestrian friendly? Uh, and we do have space here, so, um, maybe we'll get some recommendations from our technical consultant. Um, so the Town Center Program, also known as the Elm Connection. This would be an extension of the pilot program that we did. Um, obviously, the specific details and the dates and all of that would depend on when the funding for this came through, how much of the funding came through. Uh, but the idea would be to close off Elm Street here and here, and add some movable chairs, uh, tables and chairs here, and potentially lay out some AstroTurf. I think it would be great to have some, some lighting above and really make it a, a nice environment to be in. Anecdotally, from the pilot program, I heard that people still, still didn't wanna go into the actual street, cuz I think we're so programmed to, to, to not go into streets, right? But I, I heard that some folks, when they're with their families, and while they didn't go into the street, they, they could relax in a way that they couldn't if the street were open. So, I think that having a big giant park in the middle of, um, downtown Walpole would be a huge amenity for the town, especially with those 500 some odd units coming online soon. Um, this, you know, this, we need to be very intentional about signage that's included with this to show people where they can go in terms of detouring the traffic that would normally go through there. Um, let's see. Here, here's a picture I stole from some, somewhere, from one of the events that was there, just kind of showing, like people will bring, literally bring their own furniture there, which is kind of neat. And these are people using those, um, those tables that we borrowed from the rec department. Um, here's just a picture of Elm Street. Um, we could also get creative about how that space is programmed. So, you know, if we have like a connect four, and we had some like sanitizing things out there, so people could sterilize it in between families using it, um, maybe being able to show movies. Uh, I think there's a lot of potential there if we, if we did close that connection to, to have a lot of, um, space. Um, so that's basically the, the overview of what we're working on for the grant application.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, that's, uh, really great stuff for the downtown area. Why don't we go around, um, real quick and, and everyone on the board can comment, uh, and give input, ask questions? Um, Jim O'Neil, why don't we start with you?
Great, thanks, uh, uh, Ben. Uh, Ashley, this is tremendous, and I, I love this whole concept that you've got here. A, a couple of questions. Um, could you go back to the potted plants view of Main Street? The one that had the potted plants in that white area? I wonder if it would be possible to take just a little bit more space there, and rather than put the plants there, actually increase the parklet that you've got right there? Is that a possibility?
Um, so, okay, yeah, so the parklet would be down there. One thing that our technical reviewer recommends that we kind of think about is, he said that you could move the parking spaces, since there's room here, and there's this kind of taped season, and it's a good way to kind of pilot something, uh, especially because, you know, repainting and curbing and all of that can be really involved. But they said that we could actually move the parking spaces away from the curb and put cones to make the sidewalk wider, or parklet wider. Basically, create more space dedicated to pedestrians, simply by throwing down some tape. Not simply, I'm sure there's other stuff that goes into it, uh, but moving the parking away, and then you would make this lane narrower.
Yeah, and that way you could increase your parklet there, which, when you, when you look at that, that picture of the parklet that you have, it's, it's, it's really pretty, and I, I think is, um, is, is a really nice amenity. So, I, I really liked that a lot, yeah, and there it is right there. And if that was even just a little bit wider, I, I mean, it's just, it just make it that much nicer. I mean, this is, this is great. Cuz I don't, I don't really think the, the plants, I'm not sure are gonna work there, um, but, but I like the, at least creative thought. Now, the place where the plants might work, go over to the Elm Street one. As you mentioned, that people are a little, you know, concerned about being in, uh, they're being in the, in the street. So, you know, we, we have the two ends of Elm Street block of, yeah, that one. I wonder if you ran those plants down the middle of Elm Street? If that would soften it up a little bit and make that a little more attractive? Just a thought. I, you know, we don't have to solve it here, but, but just a, but just a thought. And then, the, the other, uh, thought that I had was, um, was what? I have forgotten it now. Um... Well, maybe it'll come back to me. My question is, for the grant that you're, that you're requesting, how much of this can, can reasonably done, be done with the grant you're requesting? All of it, or part of it?
We'll see. Um, so the, the goal of the grant is really quick implementation, so kind of, what, what can we throw down with some, some tape and some cones and like, let's get this out there? My, my hunch is that there might be more grants down the road to make some, so they wanna know, um, they wanna know basically, in the grant application, what the interest is on making these changes, like, permanent? So, I, I think down the road, you know, we, we can have that conversation, and we could say, oh, we did this pilot program, and, you know, it worked well, it didn't work well. Um, but, yeah, so I'm, I'm optimistic. I think the biggest, the, the one that is least likely to get approved is probably the crosswalk at Springbrook Park, because just a lot more will go in to building a crosswalk. So, when we spoke to the technical reviewer, they're like, we can shoot for it, and we can ask, and, you know, if we don't get that part of the funding, then, um, you know, that's okay.
Good. And then two, two last really quick things. The, uh, the picnic tables, I wonder if we reached out to Tri-County? If we could get them to make those for us? That might be something worth pursuing. And then, uh, I know we've got some, you know, local landscape companies, and, you know, people like Brad Murphy that did such a great job up at the senior center, I wonder if they would be willing to help us with some of this, uh, you know, particularly that Elm Street piece again, and maybe there's some interesting landscaping we can do there. Uh, cuz I, I love this idea of the full park thing with the common. I, you're really on to something there. Uh, these commons are beautiful, but they're a little split up. And, uh, you can see how if we, if we did the right thing here, you create a, a really, really interesting situation there. So, anyway, those are my comments. Thanks, Ashley. Great work.
Thanks, Jim. Uh, Mark?
Thanks, Ben. Um, I don't wanna repeat what Jim said. I do like the whole, uh, concept and idea. I am a little worried about the Town Center Elm Street piece, um, with traffic flow. Um, having spent some time downtown at rush hour, um, a lot of cars flow through that intersection. So, I, I just wanna make sure that we really take a look at that and, um, shut down the Elm Street connection, and then create a traffic nightmare all the rest of, around downtown, so please take a look at that, that one piece.
Yes.
Great. Thanks for that, Ashley. Alright. Alright, uh, Nancy?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, um, thanks. Um, to build on both what Jim and Mark said, um, I am worried about traffic. I think a, it would be a great thing for the weekends. Um, you know, once we got through like Friday rush hour and then kind of opened it up through the weekends, and then it, it does make it also like an, increases its destination kind of want to be for families and things like that. Um, cuz traffic definitely going through there, and with Johnson Middle School right on the other side of there, it's a very heavily traveled road, piece of road. Um, but I love the idea of the planters, Jim, and put those kind of, you know, cuz those are things that could be moved. So, after Friday night, traffic goes through, those planters go up and it's open. Um, there's also the prisons that do metalwork and things like that to make kind of those, um, tables. Uh, you know, at my work now in the lawn, we have the, it, they're like metal picnic tables that seat either two or four people, and they're kind of just spread out all over the place. Um, you know, I think they'd be a good resource to look into up at the prison to see if they could make something like that. And otherwise, it, you know, it looks great. I would love, um, down by the Springbrook, uh, the, um, crossover there would be great. Um, a few years ago, Jim, remember, we looked into actually doing one of those outdoor adult gyms there? We had applied for a grant. Um, I still think in that same area, that would be really kind of awesome for, again, parents that are watching their kids play sporting events in the weekends, or even Town Hall that wants to go out and do the circuit training at their lunchtime. That, uh, you know, if you could keep your eye open for something like that over there, it would be, um, you know, a fun place, and we had kind of identified it in the past.
Great, thank you for that. I'll definitely see what I can dig up on that. Um, if I could just make one comment about the temporary closures of the Elm Street is, uh, I spoke with the planner in Norwood, cuz they closed, you know, their whole Main Street, and initially, they were just gonna do it at the weekend, but they found that the, the labor and the, basically, the, the human power that went into putting out all the tables and the tables and the chairs and getting everything out there took them much longer than they expected. Um, so just putting that out there, that, um, you know, the more we bring things in and out, the more, you know, it's gonna take in terms of, um, just having humans moving stuff around, so, um, yeah.
Okay. Anything else, Nancy, or are you all set? Good. Alright, well, thank you, uh, very much, Ashley, again, for, for putting this together and, and identifying this grant and, and going after it. All three of the items that you brought up would be, uh, great additions to the downtown for sure, and much needed. And, um, I'd also like to point out, like I often do when we talk about these sorts of programs, that, um, this is just scratching the surface of what's out there, um, for us to go and get as far as grants. But also, in terms of, these are large new temporary, uh, initiatives. And while that's nice, I think a lot of them can lead to, to permanent initiatives. So, um, all of that is a long way down the road, given current circumstances, but I'd like people to think, uh, in terms of that as well. So, thank you, Ashley. Really appreciate it. And you don't, Ashley, you don't need any other votes or any other direction from us on this, this evening?
Nope, not tonight. Thank you.
Great.
Ben, while we still have Ashley on, um, can we go over the Pinnacle Point, or just so we can get her off and give some space on the call?
Sure, yeah.
Are you taking up too much room?
Well, you, you can stop sharing your screen, but apart from that, no, it's great.
Great.
Yeah. Thanks, Ashley. So, we're gonna skip down to, um, item nine on our agenda for tonight, which is, um, the review, uh, and discussion and approval of the Letter to Mass Housing Regarding the Pinnacle Point Project. So, Jim Johnson, you wanna start off with this?
Yeah, sure. So, this is something for, um, Pinnacle Points in East Walpole over near Jimmy's Pizza, right on the, uh, waterway there. It's just one, 1.3 or so acres down there. Um, uh, they're proposing to put a 40B in there, uh, for just about 40 houses. And, uh, we got this application kind of in the middle of COVID from Mass Housing. Uh, we asked for an extension, which we were granted one to respond, and, uh, the deadline's coming up soon, uh, August 1st. We're waiting for the department heads to get some comments back, but, uh, we're gonna add those in as an attachment just towards the back, but I wanted to make sure, um, we, uh, we had Ashley weigh in, and, uh, council's weighed in and reviewed this, and a couple of people we've worked with in the past have also worked with us on it. So, uh, it's here for the board. I know you guys have had it, uh, since last week. I know, Ben, you had some comments. I think Jim had a couple of comments too. Um, and, uh, there, we're, we're good to go if everybody else is comfortable with it to authorize you to sign it.
Okay, well, why don't we go around, um, and make our way, and if folks have questions for Ashley? Ashley, why don't we start, Ashley, with you? Was there anything that you wish to add before we open up the discussion on this matter?
Nope. I, I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah. Great, I appreciate you. I know you put a lot of time into these letters and the responses, uh, and getting all of that organized. So, uh, let's go ahead. Mark, why don't we start with you?
Yeah, I, I like the letter. I, I think, uh, Ashley has summed up the issues well. Um, I'm especially concerned about the lack of detail about this project, and you zoomed in on that issue, uh, which is really good. So, I'm, I like the letter. I think we should go-
Okay, great. Uh, let's see. Nancy?
Um, I'm good with all the comments.
Okay, great. And Jim O'Neil?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good as well. Uh, likewise, uh, to reiterate what Mark said, that there's a lot of information that is lacking with this proposal. It's just not there. And, uh, we, we really do need a lot more detail in order to assess the project. And Ashley, I think you did a nice job of, of laying that out, so thank you. I thought it was an extremely well-written letter, so thanks.
Thank you.
And I, and I echo those sentiments again, Ashley. Um, I think it, it strikes the right tone, what we need to on this item, so really appreciate it. Alright, uh, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to, um, approve the Letter to Mass Housing Regarding Proposed Pinnacle Point Project.
I'll second that. Authorize Ben to sign?
As amended, as mentioned, amended as mentioned.
I'll resecond.
Great. Alright, we'll, uh, roll call vote then. Jim O'Neil, aye? Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye. 4-0-0. Alright, thank you very much, Ashley. I really appreciate you coming on tonight and, uh, keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you, Ashley.
Alright, so we will skip back to item number two on our agenda, and we have Fire Chief Tim Bailey for quarterly updates, as well as some additional information on, uh, local area hospital agreements in light of the, uh, recent occurrences over in Norwood. Chief, how are you?
Uh, good evening. I'm, I'm well, thank you.
Good.
So, the last time that I met with the board was on March 10th. A lot has happened since then. On March 16th, uh, we had 12 members that went out, uh, that were up, put out on quarantine for possible exposure uh, to a member here at the station. Uh, that ended up being negative, and we all came back to work on the 20th. On the 20th, we also opened up Station 2, and that was done to increase the social distancing, uh, which we currently still have in place today. Uh, one of the things that was affected by that, uh, closure and, and all of this coming about was that we made it so that all of our administration can work remotely. Uh, myself and the deputy and my administrative assistant. Linda did spend, uh, approximately two months working, uh, remotely. Uh, we did not miss a beat while that happened. Uh, she was able to do everything that we do here at the station. The deputy and I came back to work, uh, as soon as our quarantine period was over. Uh, since that time, we've had eight other members out due to possible exposures, and all have come back, uh, with negative, uh, effects. Uh, I owe a tremendous amount of gratitude to my staff who are out on the front line of this every day. Uh, not only are they taking care of sick patients, but they're doing it in the back of the ambulance, which is only four foot high, 11 foot wide, and, um, six feet high. So, as you can tell, that's a very quarant, uh, very tight space. Uh, they wear all the proper protective equipment, and I'm proud to say that none of my members have come down with, uh, COVID as of this point, uh, due to their diligence, uh, in protecting themselves. Uh, EMS, EMS statistics, uh, I have some statistics for you with regards to the, uh, since we went out on COVID. Um, we've done 605 total incidents since then. Of them, COVID runs were 179 out of the ones, uh, out of the 605 for 29.59% of our calls. What does that mean? So, 3.9% were actually confirmed COVID cases, and the other 95.5 were suspected COVID cases, in that they exhibited one or more symptoms uh, when the call came in, and that was how they were handled. PPE continues to be an issue. You've heard of it many times on the news, I'm sure, uh, affecting the hospitals. It also affects us out on the street, uh, here in town as well. Um, it's been a laborious process for us to procure and stock up. We have a moderate supply of, uh, PPE at this point in time. We're still trying to gain more. Uh, it still continues to be an issue. Uh, even as late as today, we were told that one of our shipments had been cut in half. So, um, we're still trying to stock up as best we can. I, I am fearful of a surge, uh, coming in the fall, as has been mentioned, uh, throughout the media significantly. So, our call volume. Uh, for 2020, we've, currently, we've done 1,842 emergency calls, the largest day being on April 13th, when we had a small microburst come through. We did 44 calls in a five-hour period. We've also done 1,752 inspections and permits. That phase of our, uh, of our operation has been severely impacted by the closure. Uh, we have not done much in the way of inspections, uh, from March up until the beginning of June, when we started reintroducing out-to-do inspections. Uh, we've done it, uh, in a cautious approach, and, uh, we make all of our personnel go out, uh, with face covering, and we make sure that they ask all the pertinent questions. We try to do them if there's nobody home or nobody in a business when we go there. It's not always possible to do that. Uh, we're doing the best that we can to try to accommodate. So, with those numbers, it comes up to 3,594 calls for service of 18.5 per day, which is a little bit down from where we were last year, but it's because of the fact that we weren't out doing a lot of the things that we would normally do, uh, during that timeframe. It's also important to note that our, our building was also locked down. We weren't doing any, um, tours, any, any type of children's visits to the firehouse. Uh, we are still in a semi-lockdown mode, uh, even as we speak. visits to the firehouse. We are still in a semi-lockdown mode, even as we speak. We're opening at Jim's direction, the front lobby, this week. So we're in a modified approach. Our building is secure anyways, on the living quarters and on the administration level, so we can kind of secure that anyways. The apparatus floor becomes a little bit more problematic, especially in the good weather, when the doors are open. We've had 10 fires since January, three fires since the last time we met. Two of those occurred on June 28th. June 28th is the day that we had the storm come through. Certain parts of town got up to five inches of rain. We had a fire, a garage fire in a vacant garage. We had a small fire in another outbuilding. And we also went to Norwood Hospital on a second alarm to help with the evacuation process of the La Russa Building. Which brings me to the update for the hospital. I had a meeting last week with the hospital, and in that meeting, they brought us in, the fire chiefs in, and they wanted to reassure us that their mission and their goal is to reopen Norwood Hospital. They're looking to do this in a three-phase approach. It's going to take some time to do this. The first phase would be to reopen the emergency department. The second phase will be to open up the cath lab, surgery, day surgery, and other areas of the hospital, and some inpatient rooms. And Phase 3 will be the reconstruction of the La Russa Building, which has to come down due to the severity of the damage. So that building will be coming down and be going back up in its entirety, as I said, in a three-phased approach. What does that mean for us? Well, it means that we can't go to the Norwood Hospital for our transports, which is our primary destination. We, by OEMS standards, are required to go to the closest medical facility, depending on, the only way to can deviate from that is through medical control. Our medical control currently is through Good Samaritan over in Brockton. They've shifted that, that's another steward hospital. They've shifted our medical control over to them. They will give us medical control for any hospital that we choose to transport to, depending on our location in town. Since that has happened on the 28th, our impact has been to transport to Beth Israel Deaconess in Needham 29% of the time, Good Samaritan in Brockton 26% of the time, Newton Walsley 9, Beth Israel Deaconess Medical Center West 6%, again into the city of Birmingham Women's 6%, Sturdy 6% of our calls, Mass General 3%, Milford Hospital, and Rhode Island Hospital, both at 3%. What does this mean? It means that our mileage has increased dramatically for all of our transports, as well as our time. Our time used to be a turnaround time of about 45 minutes when we went to Norwood Hospital. Now it is up to an hour and 15, to upwards of two hours in time, depending on where we transport. One of the issues that we're dealing with is that, in order to get our medications replenished, we have to have a medication exchange agreement with the hospital. We currently have two of those. One is at Good Samaritan in Brockton, and the other one is at Beth Israel Deaconess in Needham. If we go in town with a patient that requires us to use medications, we then have to come back out, and either go to Needham or to Brockton to get our medications replenished. I am working currently with my EMS coordinator, try to get other med exchange agreements that would come before your board, which I'll be explaining in a few minutes, so that we can expedite that time and that turnaround a little bit quicker to get our units back. It also impacts us greatly in that, when the hospital was opened at Norwood, we were able to call our ambulance and ask them to return for another call. They could do that, and then get the face sheet back to the hospital. Now, because of the distance involved, we're relying on mutual aid much more than we were before. In the first six months of the year, we had mutual aid. We received it 21 times, and we gave it 45 times. In the last two weeks alone, we've received it seven times and given it 10 times. We're giving each other a lot more mutual aid and receiving a lot more mutual aid, because our ambulances are all tied up in faraway hospitals, and it takes a lot longer for us to get back into service. Which brings me to the agreements. I had sent these out last week. The first is the ambulance service affiliation agreement, and then we have two agreements for medication exchange. I worked with Patrick a week and a half ago with these agreements that were sent to council. Council suggested that I not sign these, because I'm not the appointing authority. That would be the Board of Selectmen. But in the nature of trying to get this turned around quickly, they told me that I could sign it and then bring it before the board, which is where I am this evening. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review these. What these do is, the affiliation agreement is what we need in order to run our ambulance service. That's through Dr. Michael Volkanis and the steward Norwood Hospital. They're still doing the administrative functions of the hospital to work with our affiliation agreement through the other steward network. The other two are for the medication exchange, as I mentioned, to get our medications when we go to those hospitals. And I've had both of those signed. All the agreements have been signed. Do you want me to stop here, Mr. Chairman, or would you like me to finish and then come back?
Oh, no, go ahead. Why don't you go ahead?
So, on the ambulance, our current ambulance account has $1,009,656.19. For fiscal year 20, we brought in $1,351,776. Of note, though, with COVID, we had a decrease in our run volume, and we're down approximately 122 runs from where we were last year, which is about $24,000 a month. We got that information from our ambulance billing provider, which is Comstar. And that, as you said, is pretty consistent with everyone around, that people stopped going and taking the ambulance. A lot of our less critical calls, we noticed a big drop-off on some of those. They are back on the uptick again, but we're assuming that that was what accounted for some of that. What did happen in that timeframe, and I'll be curious to see what the numbers actually turn out being, is that even though we had a decrease in the number of calls, the number of serious calls increased. So we were giving out a lot more medication and doing a lot more procedures that we normally wouldn't do in the frequency that we were doing. Current budget, just started. I have no issues with this time. Detail billing is in good standing. We did stop details in March, but we have since resumed those. As I mentioned earlier, smoke and CO inspections were stopped in March and have since also resumed. On the capital end of things, the new ambulance arrived in mid-March and is in service. The turnout gear was put on hold for a while, but Jim released that back to me a couple weeks ago, and that was being ordered as we speak. That'll give everyone, replace the 25 sets of gear that's expired, and also bring in the second set of gear for all of our members. On the grant front, we have several things in the workings. We're working on a regional grant for portable simulation lab. That'll be with the Norfolk County Chiefs. That has been placed, and that grant was submitted. We still have no word on that. We also submitted a regional supplemental grant for personal protective equipment. We chose to go with a regional approach rather than an individual approach, because the regional approach has much better success rate of being awarded. We're still waiting to hear on that. If that comes through, we'll be in good stead with our PPE on a regional level. Here's relief fund. We received an automatic stimulus fund payment of $27,279. This is a result of a federal government's support, healthcare providers fighting the pandemic. This amount was determined based on our share of the Medicare FFS, or Fee for Service Reimbursements in 2019. We also applied for the CESF, which is a Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant. This was applied for, along with the Police Department. Both departments were able to request up to $25,000. We asked for $24,708, of which $12,708 will be for personal protective equipment, and $12,000 for the station cleaning and sterilization of both Station 1 and Station 2. Safe Grant stands at $4,565. We haven't been able to use that, because school hasn't been in session, as has the Senior Safe Grant, which is $2,552. That is also on hold, as the senior center has been closed. Fire prevention remains extremely busy. The deputy has done yeoman's work here in the office, catching up with all of the plan reviews and zoning requests and all that stuff that happens in the office, and he's been extremely busy with that. Fire alarm, the double pole issue that has been out there for several years. We have, it's nice to say that we are finally caught up with just about all of our double poles and line transfers, with the exception of Route 1A, which is currently being placed with new poles in anticipation of the reconstruction. Those will have to be done at a later date, and the few that we have left, we're waiting on our truck to come back. It is broken down once again, and needs to be fixed. Training, the tower ladder training is still something that sticks out there, that I just haven't been able to secure funding for that. Gas company did some training for us just before the outbreak. We've done an extensive amount of COVID-19 training in-house, and our new building familiarizations were going strong before the stoppage, which happened back in March. On the personnel level, Bill Shernick is in the academy. He started on July 6th. He'll be graduating on September 14th. The Fire Academy has changed the way they do things. They're doing the first two weeks virtual, which means we have our candidates here in the station for the first two weeks. They're here from 7:00 to 3:30, and they're in our conference room doing everything virtually, all the classroom portion of their training. Then they will go to the Fire Academy for four weeks. Then they'll be back to us for one week, back at the academy for two weeks, and then back with us for the last week before their graduation. I also got word today that San Bruce will be starting the academy on September 28th, and Rafael Laro will be starting on October 26th. I have one more candidate to go, who still has to take his PAT, and once he gets his PAT, we will also have an academy date for him. We currently have no injuries. Everyone is back to work. There is one thing that I would like to mention, though, on that, is that I do have one member who was going to be out for about three weeks, having that procedure done on his own. And I also have a veteran who is being deployed in December, and he will be gone for 11 months. So I will give you more on that as we get closer to that, and I firm up the dates on that. But he has given me advance warning on that. And open burning season went without any hitches. We did have uptick in the amount of open burning, people that were out burning because of everyone being confined. And I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Great. Thank you, Chief. And it may seem like it goes without saying, but it certainly needs to be said that we appreciate all of your hard work and everybody on the department. It has been such an extraordinary time for everyone. But many of the points you touched on, really bring it home, what an extraordinary job you all do. So thank you very much, and please extend the same, you know, from our board to everybody in the department. It's really been great.
I will. Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. So let's actually take this in parts, because we have three agreements here to discuss. But first, let's go around, and if anyone has any questions or comments from the chief on the standard quarterly update information, why don't we start with that? And then we'll take each of these agreements individually. Why don't we start, Jim O'Neill?
Yeah, I don't have any questions on the agreements, Chief. They all read very similarly, and certainly, we need to have them in place. The only question I had about the whole process was how you decide which place to go to. Is it based on the particular case involved, or, you know, how do you pick one spot over another?
Many times, it is the case involved, but it also can be an area or town that we're in. If we're in the far southern end of town, it may make more sense to go to Sturdy, as opposed to the northern end of town, it may make more sense to go to Needham. And Northern and Eastern part, it might be more sense to go to Good Sam. Good Sam and Needham, Brockton, which is in Brockton and Needham, are the two that they seem to be migrating to, although we have done a bunch of trips into the city for some of our more serious cases.
Okay, thanks. Hey, unrelated, quick question, if I may. I think you mentioned tower training during your update, and it sounded like you have been deferring that due to funding challenges. Did I hear that right?
Yes, that's correct. I've been trying to get the money to do that advanced tower training. I just haven't been able to make that happen yet.
And what are we giving up by not, we have the tower truck?
Yes.
And those apartments are now opening up downtown, which was the reason we wanted, we needed the truck. So what are we giving up by not having our firefighters trained?
So everyone is fully trained on the truck, and they are very proficient at it. They actually, you see it around town a lot. They're still out driving it around. Familiarization's a lot bigger than the piece of apparatus that we've had in the past. The workings of it are different. They've gone out and they've been practicing it on buildings that are vacant, as well as occupied buildings, just to try to get the feel for it. The advanced training is more, it's from people that have actually worked on that type of truck in the past, that can bring a different insight and a different knowledge level of different applications that we can use that truck for. These are city firefighters that have used this truck on a regular basis. There's some good points to it, and that's why I'm trying to obtain that. It's not that the guys aren't trained in it currently. It's advancement of training.
That's a good clarification. The thing that concerns me is that if we have, we have equipment that we could be using, and if something were to happen, and we weren't able to fully use the equipment because we didn't have the advanced training, that would really disturb me. So I guess I'd like to hear more about this, maybe not today, but come back with, you know, Jim, maybe you could work with the chief and figure out, you know, how do we move that forward so that we're able to utilize the equipment to its fullest extent? You never know when you're gonna need it. So.
Right. I can get you that.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Ben.
Okay, great. Nancy?
Thanks, Ben. Chief, I'm really worried about the Norwood thing. Right now, you know, you said we only need mutual aid seven times, but as volume is going up, and whether it be an outbreak or it be just volume is going up, what is also gonna go up is traffic. And so your turnaround time is gonna be even longer than it already is just with distance. But, you know, this, for the next year, is gonna be a problem.
Correct.
And, you know, that is also length of time to a heart attack, length of time to a stroke, and that is really concerning, and we have a humongous town. You know, 20 square miles is a lot, and that's really when you guys aren't here, and you are somewhere else, and you can't get to those hearts and strokes, it means people die. So, I mean, I think we're gonna have to stay on top of this, and, you know.
You actually bring up another point that I failed to mention, in that it also reduces my firefighting capability dramatically. If both ambulances are tied up far away, I can't get them back as fast as I would when they were at Norwood. So the turnaround time is definitely impacts a lot of areas within our service.
Yeah. And so I think that we're gonna have to maybe, I mean, there might need to be a backup plan. I don't know what it's gonna be, or what it looks like, but, you know, that's, a year is a long time to go without these services, as considering people have already been, you know, going without the medical care they should have necessarily been getting.
Yeah, yeah. I'm kind of at a loss on that one, but.
I don't know what the answer is. I mean, you're doing everything you can right now anyway, making these medical agreements. We absolutely need them, because you guys can't change your meds without it.
No, we are. And the guys that are treating the patients are very good at what they do.
Is Mikey over in Brockton now?
Yes, he is. And he's also still working out of the Mansfield Fire Department as our medical control, so.
Good. That's it.
You know, we have the mutual aid as well. So, I mean, we're gonna just all be relying on each other to help each other out through this period. So.
Right.
All of us, yeah, actually, all of us now, all operate two ambulances. So everyone around us, so there's, you know.
It is what it is.
We'll make it work.
Yeah. Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Nancy. And just to go back on one of those points, Chief, when we were talking about when, or I guess the three phases of reopening being the emergency department first, then surgery and some inpatients, and then their construction of the new building, what is the timeline associated with the emergency department first? Is it really a year, or is it something less than that? Because I think it might have been in the news that I had seen. It was in terms of months, more than a year. But, you know?
I do. They asked us to kind of keep it to the phases, but it will be, it will be with, well, they, just because. They asked us to kind of keep it to the phases, but it will be, it will be with, well, they, just because things can happen when you're dealing with an old building. But they're hoping in two to three months on the ED. And then another, another several months after that for phase two. And then the build out of the new facility will obviously take, we've seen the construction in our own town. So we know that that's a 18 to 24 month type frame, timeframe, so. And it could be more, it could be more.
Yeah, absolutely. I think we all just need to be reasonable and approach it with clear eyes, understanding that we have mutual aid that we're gonna be relying on each other, but that, you know, two to three months, hopefully four months on the outside, we'll have that back, so.
So one of the things with the, if I may, one of the things with the ED reopening though in 60 to 90 days roughly, or as soon as they can, is that even though they won't have the capacity to deal with everything there, they'll still be able to be a destination for us if we had to go there first for stabilization and then. So that is an important cog to get back up and running. So we're waiting and working with them as best we can and hoping for the best on that, so.
Great, thank you. And Mark?
Chief, you know, with about four months experience now with COVID, and I know our ambulances are well equipped and we're opening the town warrant for fall tonight. Is there anything that you wish you had or you wish you had more of? Or is there any pieces of new equipment that would be helpful? You know, COVID is not going to go away anytime soon. And you don't have to tell us tonight, but if there's anything you were wishing you had going forward, now's a good time to bring that up, you know, with us and with Jim. I don't know if there's anything, but if there is, you know, give it some thought over the next couple of weeks and bring it to the forefront quickly.
Sure. Can do that. Thank you.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to the, the medication exchange agreements with Stewart and Brockton, BI in Needham, and then the ambulance service affiliation agreement in Norwood. And I think it seems appropriate probably, Jim, to take these one at a time?
That's fine. We're just, it's more of crossing the, crossing the Ts and dotting the Is type of thing. Just because we, we are kind of in an emergency situation and the chief's already signed it, so that's fine. I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. All right, can we have a motion?
Make a motion to ratify the medication agreement with Stewart Good Sam Medical Center as presented in our packets.
I'll second that.
All right, roll call votes. Jim O'Neil?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, it's four zero zero. And motion for the next one, Nancy, please.
Yes, I will make a motion to ratify the medication agreement as presented in our packet with, I'm sorry, I'm trying to just read the official name that's on the contract. Scrolling too many times. With BID Medical Center, Needham.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, it's four zero zero. And the last one, please Nancy.
I will make a motion to sign the medication agreement as presented in our packets with, I'm sorry. Stewart, was Stewart Norwood Hospital, Inc., is that how it's written?
Yes.
Yes. I'll second that.
Roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, it's four zero zero. All right, thank you very much, Chief. I appreciate all the information and we'll see you next time.
Great, thank you.
Can I just ask, Chief, we're covered for everything now. You got everything you need, right?
Yes, I actually have, well, I actually have one more thing that actually, but it wasn't in my list. But I have a, as I mentioned earlier, one of my members is going for his PAT. He has to take it for the second time. And when you take it for the second time, the appointing authority has to sign it. How would you like me to handle that? I just got this today.
When's he going for it, Chief?
As soon as I get this signed, I can get it in so he can take it.
So Ben, we didn't know this was gonna come up, but it's kind of, given everything that's happening, I'm comfortable with saying let's, you guys are the appointing authority, let's authorize the chief to sign if you're good with it.
Yeah, I think so. It sounds like it's time sensitive, so it's something that we ought to address tonight. So why don't we go around quick and have any questions or discussions before we get to a vote? Mark, do you want to start us off this time, please?
I'm good with that. It's time sensitive, let the chief sign it.
Okay, Nancy?
Agree.
Okay, and Jim?
Yeah, and I agree as well, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks Chief.
Thanks Chief.
All right, thank you. Have a good night.
Good night, Chief.
Good night.
All right, so we'll move on to item three under new business, which is the vote to appoint Democratic election officers for 2020.
Sure, Ben, if you want a quick introduction on this one. This is for the election workers that Liz has worked the polls here. She made a note to me that it's getting harder and harder to find people to sign up for this just because there are so many people registered as unenrolled. But that's more of a statewide problem she mentioned, so it's pretty standard.
All right, let's go around then for discussion of questions. Jim?
Nothing for me, Ben.
Okay, Mark?
Nothing for me.
Nancy?
My only question is, if people wanted to see who the list of these people are, where do we locate it? Is it right on the webpage or?
Actually, I believe it's probably posted in two spots on, it's part of your packet, it's gonna be part of the minutes, and also on Liz's website.
Okay. Great, that's all. I can make a motion.
Please.
All right, I'll make a motion to appoint the Democratic Committee as presented in our packet.
I'll second that.
Okay, roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, it's four zero zero. Next one, Nancy?
I'll make a motion to appoint the Republican election workers for 2020 as presented in our packet.
I'll second that.
And roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Ben, aye, four zero zero. Okay, moving on to the next item, number five under new business, is the vote toward bid contract for cleaning redevelopment and chemical treatment of gravel-packed wells. Jim?
Sure, I see that Rick's on this call. I'm guessing he's here for all four of these bid awards. The first one's for the cleaning and chemical treatment of the wells. We received just one bid for this one. So I recommend award to Mar, what's it, Mar Company, out of air mass for the lump sum price of 103,935. Rick, anything to add?
No, as Jim said, we received one bidder. We've used this company in the past with no regret and the unit prices were in line with what we expected.
Okay, great. We'll go around for our questions and discussions. Nancy, why don't we start with you this time, please?
Oh, I have no questions. I'm ready to make a motion if you want.
Jim, do you have any questions to discuss?
Nothing for me, Ben, thanks.
Okay, Mark?
No questions.
All right, please Nancy.
I'll make a motion to award bid contract number 2020-29 for cleaning and redevelopment and chemical treatment of gravel-packed wells.
I'll second that.
We'll do a roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, it's four zero zero.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number six is another vote toward a bid contract for professional service for on-call support and systems upgrade. Jim?
So I had to check and see what SCADA stood for. It's Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. Essentially, it's the remote monitoring of our water installations. Again, one bid received for this one. Scott Gusselson, the Assistant Superintendent, Bernie, the Superintendent, and Rick all reviewed the proposal. They're comfortable with it, so I'd recommend award to Warden and Curran, we've worked with them before, for 232,760. Rick, anything to add?
No, Warden and Curran has been our technical support firm for many, many years and has provided great service to us. So I have no regret with awarding this contract.
Okay, great. Any discussion from any of the three members? Being none, we'd have a motion?
I will make a motion to award bid contract number 2020-31 for professional services for on-call services support and SCADA systems upgrade.
I'll second that.
Great, have a roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Ben, aye, it's four zero zero. Moving on to item number seven under new business is a vote to grant Jim Johnson permission to sign the weekly warrants in the board's absence. Jim?
Yeah, this is just something that when Eva started, we thought that instead of reaching out to each one of you separately each week, it would be easier for you to grant permission for me to sign this for the warrants, just for the finance department. Pretty standard.
Okay, I'll take any discussion on this one. Jim?
Not for me, Ben, thanks.
And Mark?
No discussion.
Nancy?
No discussion, I'll make a motion. I make a motion to grant Jim Johnson, Town Administrator, permission to sign the weekly warrants for the board, in the board's absence.
I'll second that.
And the roll call vote will go to Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, four zero zero. Moving on to item eight is a vote to open the 2020 Fall Town Meeting Warrants. Already, we just have to.
So I'll make a motion to open the 2020 Fall Town Meeting Warrant.
I'll second that.
Any discussion from the members? Being none, I'll have a roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Ben, aye, four zero zero.
And Ben, just to follow up on that one. Right now, we're at 20 plus articles. I actually put it together the end of last week. And I expect that I'll be asking the board to close that on August 18th. And we're gonna have the capital articles on there, the contractual obligations for all the town contracts that are up, the housing bylaws that have to be discussed this past spring. So cable article to catch them up, the standard in-year budget adjustment article. So a lot to catch up on, but we're ready to go.
Great. Great, okay. Item nine, we covered earlier. So why don't we go to item 10, which is the vote toward bid contract for paving on Coney Street and Route 1? Jim?
Yeah, sure. So this is the Route 1A Coney Street project that was started years ago now, under the TIF back in 2015 and 16. This is one of the end phases. We got four bids in. The lowest and most responsive bidder was Walsh Contracting at 1,263,532 and 60 cents. We worked this company before, they're actually doing our paving in town again this year. They were fine. And the remaining, the funding is gonna come from the remaining Mass Works Grant that the state gave us as part of the TIF. And the rest is coming directly from Siemens. We had a meeting with them last week, they agreed to give the money over. And they actually just asked for whatever's left after this, that we give it back to them, which is fair. So, Rick, did I miss anything on that? I know this is a big one.
No, you pretty much covered everything, Jim. Like you said, we're just still working with Siemens to get that supplemental appropriation, well, supplemental funds. And if you could just award the contract, that would be good. And once we receive the funds, we can go ahead and execute it.
Great. Patrick, did I miss anything? I know this was a big, was a big bid.
No, Jim, I think you pretty much nailed it, thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. Any discussion or questions on this? Jim?
None for me, Ben.
Mark?
None for me.
And Nancy?
None for me, and I will make a motion to award bid contract number 2020-32 for paving on Coney Street and Route 1.
I'll second that.
Okay, we'll have a roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, it's four zero zero. And the item number 11, the last bid contract award for this evening is for crack sealing by fiber reinforced method. Jim, anything to add there?
No, just that we got, this is for the lowest, when most responsive bidder was the steel coating. And we're good to go with it. Rick, any comments?
No, they were the lowest qualified bidder.
Okay, great, thank you, Rick. Any discussion from any of the members? Being none, motion please?
I'll make a motion to award bid contract number 2020-33 for crack sealing by fiber reinforced method.
I'll second that.
Roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, it's four zero zero. All right, thank you, thank you to Rick as well for being on this evening. Appreciate it.
Thank you folks, good night.
Good night, Rick.
Have a good night.
You too, Rick.
Okay, all right, so. Also, thank you to the folks who have gotten on and stayed on for the duration of the meeting here for the votes to appointment to committees and commissions. I did want to say one thing before we start. As far as a thank you to Town Clerk Liz Gaffey and the newest member of our crew, Keith McKelley, for helping out over the past week or so with pulling together really the administration of the appointed boards and committees. We really want to formalize the process and bring, again, to the forefront, you know, the rules of conduct, the ethical requirements. Everybody who is part of a board or committee that's appointed by the select board is required to take the test on the state website to adhere to all of those requirements. And a lot of this sort of paperwork and review and test taking is fallen by the wayside a little bit. So thank you to Liz and Eva. And it's gonna be work in progress here for a couple of weeks to pull all that together. But hopefully, we can get it administered a little more efficiently for everybody in the future. And I appreciate also, you know, the help from all of the chairs of these boards and commissions as we review some of the charges and the charters for these groups, looking to update those that need to be updated and making sure that everybody is aligned with what the current, the current, you know, goals and plans are that are established by the town. And even more importantly, to ensure that we have racial equity across our boards and committees that are appointed by the town. Because all of these individuals are represented, but not just the select. Because all of these individuals are representative of not just the select board, but of the town as a whole. So we need to bring, not only the racial equity, but a level of professionalism and conduct that should be expected from everybody. So with all of that said, we'll move to the first appointment, which is Bailey Zimba to the Conservation Commission, and I think that, I see Bailey on here. Bailey, are you there?
I am, hi.
Hi, how are you?
I'm doing well, thank you, how are you?
Good, good, thanks. Appreciate you coming on with us tonight. If you could just, you know, reiterate who you are, the position you're applying for, and a little bit of the information that was on your application, why you wanna be a part of the Conservation Commission, and any other information that you'd like us to hear.
Absolutely, so my name is Bailey Zimba. I am from a little town in Lisbon, Connecticut, but I've been in Boston for most of my schooling. And I now live in Walpole. We moved here about six months ago in December with my husband's mother to help assist in her elder care. And I live on a property that has a water conservation pond, I live on Swan Pond, not Swan Pond, excuse me, Shoreview Lane, came from Swan Pond. And I've, you know, just always grown up in nature, loving nature, grew up on a farm. I'm part of a family preservation trust around the farm property. And I just love the idea of assisting the community and maintaining these natural spaces for future wildlife and people to enjoy.
Yeah, that's great. So what we normally do on the course of these things, Bailey, is just go around to the board members if anyone has any questions or qualifications for you. So we'll do that now. Why don't we start with Jim?
Yeah, hi Bailey, I don't have any questions for you, I just would say thank you for being willing to volunteer and be a part of a very important board, which is the Conservation Commission, so thanks very much, look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, no questions, I would say the same thing as Jim, thank you for volunteering. I hope you know what you're getting yourself into. Conservation is a good board, but at times, they're pretty busy, so, good luck.
Thank you, sir.
And Nancy?
I just wanna say welcome, and we have a very experienced board, so I think you're gonna be very excited to learn a lot. And Landis has been with us for quite some time and is so much experience that I think you're gonna love it. And with that being said, I would like to vote, make a motion to appoint Bailey Zimba to the Conservation Commission.
I'll second that.
Uh, great, and we'll have a roll call vote, Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye, and welcome.
Ben, aye, it's four zero zero, so thank you very much Bailey for joining us tonight, and as I mentioned, for your volunteering in the community, really appreciate it, and good luck.
Thank you all very much, have a great night.
Alright, you too. Alright, next, we have an appointment of David Nardelli to the Walpole Housing Partnership Committee. David?
Hello, my name's David Nardelli, I'm Walpole resident, born and raised. I live in Swan Pond currently, and I'm applying for the Walpole Housing Partnership position. And I recently just graduated with my master in urban planning and policy, so I think that gives me a good technical skills for the position, and then also, I've had personal experience living in public housing in Ella Street in Walpole for a short period of time. And I just wanna make sure that Walpole is doing its due diligence in creating affordable housing in the town efficiently and effectively, that doesn't piss off all the Walpole residents, yes.
Very succinctly put, David, thank you. And yet, nice to have, you know, additional educational background in the subject as well. I know as a member of the Walpole Housing Partnership, that would be very welcome, indeed. So why don't we go around to the board members, Jim, any questions or comments?
Again, no questions or comment, I think you've got great qualifications for the, for the board, not only educationally, but also your personal experience. And just wanna again, thank you for volunteering, and this is another very important board, the Walpole Housing Partnership. We've got a lot going on in that space right now, and I look forward to working with you on that as well.
Great, Mark?
Yeah, I agree with Jim, welcome aboard.
Nancy?
I'm gonna say Jim put it perfect, and with that, I would like to make a motion to appoint David Nardelli to the Housing Partnership Committee and thank him for volunteering all of his expertise.
I'll second that.
Great, we'll have a roll call vote, Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, four zero zero, so thank you very much, David, again, for volunteering, putting to use your expertise here, and good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, have a good night. Moving on, we have Clodagh Drumming, who I don't believe was able to make it tonight, had another responsibility. However, I'm just scrolling down here to the application, so it's the Walpole Cultural Council, and I know that all of us here have read through these applications, so I'd open it up first, you know, Jim, to you, if you have any comments on the application, Clodagh's application here from Cultural Council.
Again, no comments, just thanks for volunteering and look forward to working with Clodagh.
Alright, great, Mark?
Yeah, I would say the same thing, thanks for volunteering. You know, I haven't said it recently, but I think one of the things that makes Walpole a great community is all the people who are willing to volunteer their time for the other residents of the town. I think that's a great thing, thank you.
Excellent, Nancy?
I'll make the motion to appoint Clodagh Drumming to the Walpole Cultural Council.
I'll second that.
Great, we'll have a roll call vote, Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, it's four zero zero, and I've heard it again that, you know, having folks and residents who have experience in these venues is so helpful, so if people who are out there have experience or maybe in their day jobs are involved in anything from cultural council to the housing partnership to conservation, we can really use your expertise and help, so thank you, Clodagh, for putting their name as a volunteer. Next one to move to is item fifteen, Sarah McCracken to the Walpole Cultural Council, Sarah? Hello?
Good evening, thanks so much for having me.
No, no, thank you, so you've been listening in, if you could just say a little bit about yourself and your application to the Cultural Council.
Sure, well, it's great to meet everyone, I'm Sarah McCracken. I've been in Walpole for about two years, I live in Precinct Four with my husband, and I've been looking for opportunities to contribute to the town. I was really drawn to the Cultural Council, thinking back to growing up in a small town in Central Maine, quite a bit smaller than Walpole, where there were a number of community events, arts and humanities events that I really benefited from, so the opportunity to help bring more of those to Walpole was very appealing. In terms of my professional experience, I do work for a sustainability nonprofit based in Boston. We are partially grant-funded, so I've done quite a bit of work working with our development team on grant reporting, and I think that that would be a useful skill to bring into the Cultural Council.
Yeah, absolutely, well, thank you again, and we'll go to you, Jim, starting with you.
Yes, Sarah, thanks for volunteering, really appreciate it, and look forward to working with you on the Cultural Council, thanks.
Thank you.
Great, Mark?
Sarah, I would say the same thing, it looks like you have a good background for the Cultural Council and look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Great, and Nancy?
I'm gonna say welcome, and thanks for finding us. We'll make a motion to appoint Sarah McCracken to the Walpole Cultural Council.
I'll second that.
Great, so we'll have a roll call vote, Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, four zero zero, so thank you again, Sarah, for coming on with us tonight and speaking with us and for volunteering as well, good luck.
Thank you, I look forward to working with you all.
Excellent, thank you, have a good night.
You as well.
Alright. And the last one, last one of these, we have item sixteen out of new business is to vote to appoint David Anderson to the zoning board of appeals. Dave, hello?
How you doing, good evening, everyone?
How's it going? So you've heard how we're running this this evening, if you could say a bit about yourself, please, Dave, and let us know what you think.
Yeah, awesome, so my name is Dave Anderson, I'm a resident here in Walpole. I live at three sixty-three High Street with my wife and my four daughters. I actually moved to Walpole a year ago today, oddly enough, to raise my children with my wife. I have family that lives here, my sister actually works in the school district here in Walpole, I have brothers and cousins. That's how I ended up here, and so my background and my professional experience that I think would be relevant as it relates to the zoning board of appeals is actually what I do for a living. So I do a lot of entitlement consulting for developments in the city of Boston, and that requires me to work with all different types of various city agencies in Boston, you know, Parks Department, Boston Water and Sewer, Neighborhood Services, Mayor's Office, you know, on and on and on. Which, you know, obviously is very important when you're talking about big developments and or any developments that impact communities, there's a big process that goes along with that, you know, that segues into the community process, which I also have a lot of experience with. I spent two years as the president of Cedar Grove Civic in Boston, which is one of the largest civic associations in Boston. It had about six hundred members, and a big part of my job there was to help facilitate the meetings between developers and abutters and residents and, you know, kind of keep them on track to, you know, not spiral out of control, you know. One thing I will say that I do know is, like, developers and people in zoning, they understand the rules, right? They understand development and guidelines and all those things. Regular people and abutters, they don't know the rules, they know this big thing is gonna impact my life and I don't want it, and they just, you know, it's very important to have healthy, forward-thinking conversations and transparency and things like that, so. I mean, I could really go on and on about my experience of the zoning process, mostly in Boston. I primarily have done zoning board of appeals processing, various and stuff in Boston, and a lot of the community engagement stuff as well.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Why don't we start, Jim, with you?
Yeah, hi Dave, great qualifications, another tough board, one that requires a lot of effort, a lot of work, and, you know, obviously, the attendance thing really matters there because we gotta have the continuity. Sounds like you have a great background for it, and again, thanks for volunteering your time, we really appreciate it.
Mark?
Yeah, I would say, David, thanks for volunteering. I liked what you were saying about being involved with meetings with the residents and the neighbors. That is always a big thing as these big, especially the forty Bs, come through. A lot of people don't understand what the developer's rights are and what can and can't be done. So I think that's a great thing to be able to facilitate discussion, and, you know, whether we want the project or not, it's gonna, many of these projects are gonna happen, but to get the best outcome for the neighbors is a great thing.
Great, and we'll go to Nancy, please.
I just wanted to say thank you for bringing your experience and taking the time to volunteer for this, because as Jim said, it is a lot of commitment. So with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to appoint David Anderson as an associate member to the zoning board of appeals.
I'll second that.
We'll have a roll call vote, starting with Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, four zero zero. So thanks again, Dave, I really appreciate you coming on tonight and also getting involved in this way, really appreciate your expertise on the board. And I'd also definitely encourage you to reach out to some of the people within the town now. Ashley Clark, the Community Development Director, who was on earlier, is a wealth of knowledge and has been helping us to manage this, this whole process through the forty Bs, as well as the Walpole Housing Partnership, and Jim Johnson and his office. So the more that you can talk with people to get up to speed, it is gonna be kind of jumping to the fire here right away, so, thank you.
And thank you, and I absolutely will do that, I'm smart enough to know there's lots of information that I'm gonna need, or like, that is relevant, and I thank you very much for your time tonight, everyone.
Nice to meet you.
Alright, thanks, Dave. Okay. Next.
Oh, just, I'm sorry, Ben.
Take it away, Jim.
Alright, so just a couple of updates, concerts on the common. Brendan and Rick asked me to remind everyone that we're not going forward with it this year. Almost all of his acts have pulled out, so that's unfortunate, but always next year, I'm gonna be saying that for a lot of things. Pools are open, we're currently charging ten dollars an hour for per family or a group of four. We actually decreased the rates yesterday. Brendan said that he was just not getting as many people as he thought, so yes, did increase, and I thought that was fair. And we mentioned Efa, she's a welcome addition to the team here. She comes to us from Norwood, where she worked in their select board office, and prior to that, in Brookline. So welcome to Efa. And one big thing, the solar project. Norfolk County reached out last week, notified us that they'd like to offer us a first right of refusal to lease some land on North Street in another parcel just off of Fisher Street. I expect that your board will probably be considering this sometime in August as to whether or not you wanna proceed, we do have ninety days to respond to them. So just some food for thought, something that's gonna be up on our radar screens there. That's it.
Okay, great. Any other questions or discussions for Jim and the town administrators, update, Jim O'Neil?
You know, that solar farm obviously is gonna be a hot topic, and so I would like to make sure that we get to that sooner rather than later. And I'm not sure what the right way to even get at it is and really understand all the implications of it, but it's, it's gonna be a big contentious issue, and I think we just need to be getting ahead of it as best we can.
Very good, thank you, Jim, Mark?
I agree with Jim, I think that's gonna be a big issue, we'll wanna talk about that as soon as we can and get as much information as we can about those parcels and what's planned up there.
Absolutely. Nancy?
I agree. I'm all set with that.
Okay, alright, yeah, and lots more to come there, gather information, and we'll be sharing it with residents in the public, so look to our meeting in August for more information on that item. Lastly, here, we have minutes to approve, Nancy?
Make a motion to approve the minutes for June ninth, twenty twenty.
I'll second that.
We'll have a roll call vote, Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Ben, aye, it's four zero zero.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June sixteenth, twenty twenty.
I'll second that.
We'll have a roll call vote, Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, four zero zero. And the last one, please, Nancy?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for June twenty ninth, twenty twenty.
I'll second that.
We'll have a roll call vote, starting with Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye, four zero zero. Alright, so that is, uh...
Hey, Ben?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jim?
Just quickly, I noted on the June ninth minutes that we just approved, that Cindy attached a little bit of a note. Would it be okay if I read that note?
Yes.
So, as many people know, Cindy Baravi has been the board secretary for many years and has been with the town for thirty-something years, and has recently retired, and so while we welcome Efa to the team, we also say goodbye to Cindy. And as I said, at the end of the June ninth minutes, which was the last meeting that Cindy did, she did just put a little note on here, and this is what she wrote. note on here, and this is what she wrote. "As this is my last regular meeting, I will be covering for the board. I wanted to say thank you, thank to, thank you to all of you and members for the time I served as your executive assistant for the board and town administrator. I learned a lot about government that I didn't know before. I really loved my job, both planning board and board of selectmen for thirty-three and a half years. I will miss all of you and wish you all the best now and in the future. Keep up the good work. I know you will do the best for my hometown. I enjoyed working for you all." Cindy Barabee. So Cindy, thank you. That's a very classy and nice note, and thanks for your many years of service. Really appreciate it.
Absolutely, yeah, and thank you for highlighting that, Jim.
Sure.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
And we'll have our roll call vote. Jim?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And Ben, aye. Four zero zero. Thank you, everyone, and have a good night.
Good night.
Good night.